It is 7:45 on the 26th of July, and I would like to call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk please call the room.
Councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Statafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Eight members are present at forum, and we are to be meditation and pledge allegiance.
Thank you. Is there anyone that members of council, city clerk, or the mayor would like us to keep in our thoughts as we reflect on a moment of meditation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the scope of liberty and justice for all.
We do not have proceedings for tonight, so we are to special ceremonies and presentations.
With council's indulgence, we have two appointees this evening for approval, and we are a little behind schedule, so I'd like to get them approved if possible and sworn in. Is there any objection to that? All right. First, we will have Simone James-Holmes as the first ward member of the Board of Water and Light for a term to expire on June 30th, 2025. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, thank you. So we had Mrs. James into committee of the whole earlier to vet her appointment. She gave a fantastic interview. She has, or she did, I should say, serve as commissioner on the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners from 2006 to 2009. She's worked with the state of Michigan as a public servant for 25 years. In terms of her work, there's been an emphasis on oversight and revenue generation when it comes to her employment with the state. She stated that her goals as commissioner would be to work with the Board of Water and Light Management and Board of Commissioners to continue to provide affordable, reliable, and safe sustainable energy and clean water with the goal of reaching carbon neutrality, educating customers on sustainable practices while driving economic development and job creation for the Lansing community. So with that being said, I would move the resolution of appointment.
There is a proper motion before us. Is there any further discussion on the appointment of Simone James-Holmes to the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, would those in favor please vote by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. A second, we're gonna go at ease for just a moment. We're gonna go at ease. City TV, we're having issues. Are we live right now? I haven't seen it, yes or no? I got a text message that said the cameras weren't working.
They're working here, aren't they?
Well, that's it.
(inaudible)
I can hear myself too, that doesn't mean it's online.
(laughing)
The voices in my head, all right, I'm here. I got that. Signs of life from there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Simone, the suspense must be unbearable.
(laughing)
See what we go through?
Want to get some air conditioning?
All right, I'm getting reports that they can hear us, they just can't see us. So are we comfortable moving forward with just audio? All right, pretend you all have your cameras off.
All right, so if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Board of Water and Light member.
Of the Board of Water, Office of Board of Water and Light member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you.
I'll look at my name, Simone.
The next item, while that process concludes, is an appointment of Damon Milton for an at-large member of the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2023, and I'll turn that over to Councilwoman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So Pastor Damon Milton came before the Public Safety Committee on July 15th, last Thursday, or two Thursdays ago. He's serving as the Lansing community for over 25 years as a local pastor, mentor, and counselor, as vice president of the Lansing Clergy Forum, and the Lansing Police Department Chaplaincy. Sorry, I didn't know he was here today, sorry. So he came before us, Sexton graduate, born and raised here in Lansing. Go Big Reds. So I asked a couple questions during the committee. There was a few questions asked, and I asked if he would be out there promoting community policing. He said absolutely, as well as would he take the committee out into the public and not just here at City Hall? And he said absolutely as well. So I appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you for being here tonight, and with that, I'd move the resolution.
That is a proper motion. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Clerk.
All right, you gotta see how it's done. So if I can, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board of Police Commissioners member.
Of the Office of Police Board of Commissioners member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations. Good sign.
Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you, and the rest requires the clerk, so we're gonna sit here. Oh, no, it doesn't. Comments by councilmembers and city clerks. So I will start. Real quick, letting folks know who filled out comment forms for ranked choice voting, because we did speak about this at Cal as an item we will be discussing under legislative matters, we will be allowing you to speak under legislative matters and not waiting to the tail end of the meeting, just so you're clear. That will be the case. So then I will turn it over to councilmembers. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to give a happy belated birthday to Alfreda Schmidt. Her birthday was last week, and she was 95 years old. Those who know, and are in Lansing or in the political spectrum, know that she's a powerhouse, and she always has been. She's a great business owner, and just a real nice lady. She serves you tea in China and the little cookies when you come over to her house. She's just so nice, but she's now at Gray Haven Manor. She was next door to my good friend Sally Lorian, who's not there anymore, but I wanted to wish her a happy belated birthday.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Other comments? Council, Vice President Hussein.
I'm hoping she doesn't kick me, but I wanted to wish Councilwoman Carol Wood a very happy birthday. You know, and it was important for me to recognize you. Councilwoman Wood, as she wraps up her last couple years on council, you know, we've disagreed on many issues, we've disagreed on many, but Councilwoman Wood is always there, and lending her expertise and there to answer questions, and I think folks up here would be lying if they said that they didn't at least at one point or another have to pick up the phone and, or not have to pick up the phone and call Carol and get something done. So we appreciate you, we appreciate your service to the city. We are sorry that you have to be here with us tonight, but we wish you a happy birthday. Also, my oldest daughter shares a birthday with Councilwoman Wood, so Ava Hussein, I can guarantee she's not watching this, but (laughing) but I certainly want to wish her a happy birthday as well. Regarding constituent contact meetings, we will be back at it August 14th for the third ward, Southwest Lansing, which will be 10 to 12 noon, and we are going to meet at 517 Coffee. They have the space in their parking lot to provide for kind of open-air meetings, and really, I think through probably at least September, we're gonna do our best to get out and highlight some of the businesses that are making some pretty tremendous investments in our community, and 517 is certainly one of those. And so to that end, what we want to do too is kind of, the flavor of the meeting is going to be economic development in Southwest Lansing. We're doing a lot with South Waverly, we're doing a lot with critical nodes like Pleasant Grove and Holmes, but there is no more important corridor in Southwest Lansing than South MLK. And so the efforts really need to be intensive, they need to be deliberate. Some of those things are happening, some of those things need to happen, and so we are going to have representatives from LEAP with us, we're going to have representatives, sorry, from South MLK Corridor Improvement Authority. We will have a few members of the business community that are making some of those investments, those aforementioned investments along the corridor with us, and it should make for a very good conversation. When you talk about public safety, when you talk about parks, when you talk about ascension from circumstances, when you talk about, you're not talking about economic development, you're really not talking about anything. And so we have got to get serious in Southwest Lansing about that, so if you're interested in being part of that conversation, come on out on August 14th. 517 Coffee, absolutely, you will be addicted, I promise, after you try this stuff. But, yeah, and then we'll have donuts and things like that as well. Outside of that, I wanted to thank very quickly our economic development team led by Brian McGrane, obviously, Carl Dursimer with the L E D C, but in particular, I wanted to thank Hannah Bryant. I know she does watch these shows. She is an economic development, these shows, that's what it feels like sometimes, right? These council meetings. She is an economic development specialist with LEAP, and she is kind of my go-to when we're talking about those corridors and those nodes. And as an example, just last week, we had two incredible meetings, one with the owners of Metro Bowl, along with their investment management company that they've contracted with, and also with the owners of Wing Heaven, Sports Haven. And it was, you know, one of those things where we had a very short window to make these meetings happen. Those are two, in my opinion, critical locations and businesses in Southwest Lansing, a very short window to make those meetings happen, and she dropped everything to participate and really facilitate. And so, you know, we were talking about zoning and opportunities in terms of incentives and different programs out there to support small businesses, and I really believe that those meetings are gonna bear fruit. So those are just examples, but Hannah seems to always be there, be willing to support, and she's really, and I told her, I said, "I'm really getting into this job." She's really good at what she does. And then the last thing, we have two ribbon cuttings in Southwest Lansing on Wednesday, this Wednesday, so I wanted to announce those very quickly. The first is the UPS South Store in South Lansing, so this is at 3105 South MLK, as you probably know, they're a longtime business member in South Lansing. And their success, I think, at that location, really, they're doubling down on their investment at that location is critical to our residents, really to our small businesses in the area. But they have expended considerable resources, doubling down on their investment, and really growing their space over there. And so on, let's see, it's Wednesday, July 28th at 9:50 a.m. I encourage you to attend their ribbon cutting. I believe that the mayor will be with us. There will be other city officials, members from our community, but again, get out and support. If you can't make that, at least stop by and thank them for their investment in Southwest Lansing, because they certainly could have invested anywhere. And then lastly, there's a ribbon cutting, this is for a story walk, so I would like to invite all of Lansing to a celebration. This is gonna be Wednesday, July 28th at 2:00 p.m. for the recently installed story walk at Beacon Park, and this is behind the South Side Community Coalition at 3500 Simpkin Drive. So as you know, we have worked really, really hard on that southeast corner of Pleasant Grove and Holmes, and behind quality there is actually a new park, it's called Beacon Park. There's a $300,000 artificial soccer field there, there's a playground that we literally built with our own hands, there's a quarter-mile walking trail back there. And the Capitol area District Library, they were inspired by the work being done, and they decided to partner with us. They have 12 of these story walks throughout our community. If you're not familiar, essentially, these story walks kind of encourage families to come out and to engage in early child literacy. And what they do is they actually take a book in about, I think it's like one to two pages at a time, they actually have these stations, if you will, you know, and sometimes they're along walking trails, and sometimes they're in public parks, but it really encourages you to get out, read with your family, sing, act out things, get physically engaged, and so it should be a very nice addition to that area. So again, July 28th at 2:00 p.m., 3500 Simpkin Drive. We hope to see you there.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President, Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Statafor. A couple of announcements. First of all, I will be holding constituents in contact meetings, again, starting in September, pending some planning, so I will announce at our next meeting when and where those will be, and probably get on Facebook and make that announcement too, though I have been enjoying not using Facebook. In one other announcement, the owner, I just got a tour of the loft, which is down on Michigan Avenue, the previous tenants there have left, and the owner has now opened up a space called, here, let me pull up the name here, yeah, Studio 414. I toured the space, it's really nice, they're doing wedding venues, but they're also doing Thursday night comedy nights that you can get tickets for. I will be attending this week, apparently Brian has been there as well, but I just wanted, I told him that I would make an announcement here tonight, just because I ran into him, and you know, I think we should be supporting our small businesses, so, thank you. That's everything that I have, and again, I will make an announcement in the coming weeks regarding the contact meeting in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Statafor. Next week is an election here in the city of Lansing, so next Tuesday is the city primary election. I do want to take a moment and just remind the voters of their opportunities to vote. We have issued 11,400 absentee voter ballots, so the demand is quite robust. I do want to point out that 45% of the folks have not turned those ballots yet, so we just have a short amount of time to get those ballots back to us. The post office does recommend that if you're mailing them, that you allow about a week for those to make it through the mail. We do have prepaid postage on those, so you can simply complete your ballot, sign the envelope, and drop it in the mail. We also have 15 24-hour drop boxes throughout the city, where you can bring it in person to my office, either City Hall or 2500 South Washington. If you still want to get an absentee ballot, there's still plenty of time. Both offices are open through this week, 8 to 5 weekdays, and then Monday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Under Michigan law, we have to stop issuing absentee ballots except for emergency or new registrations after 4:00 on Monday. And then in addition to those hours, the 2500 South Washington location is open until 7:00 on Wednesday of this week, and from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. both Saturday and Sunday this weekend. So plenty of opportunities. And then, of course, the polls are open for the regular hours on Tuesday, so you can go to your regular polling place, 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the 3rd of August. One quick reminder, the people who normally vote at Walter North School, that building is under construction, so for August and November, you will be voting at Gardner School. So please, you were sent a notice of that, an emailed notice of that, so please participate in our government. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we will give you one minute to tell us the details.
My name is David Lambert. I'm on the troop committee for Troop 33 of the Boy Scouts of America, which is open to boys age 11 to 17 in the greater Lansing community. It meets at Judson Memorial Baptist Church near the corner of Holmes Road and South Cedar, right across the street from the South Lansing Library, on Tuesday evenings at 7:00.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none, then we are to, I will announce the close of registration for public comment on legislative matters, and legislative matters tonight includes items 2 through 11 on the council agenda, and as well, as President Statafor announced, the ranked choice voting. A couple of people filled out, and this is the blue form, this legislative matters, a couple of people filled out the yellow form, we'll go ahead and pull you forward, but if you didn't fill out any form and want to talk about ranked choice voting or any items 2 through 11, we'll give you about another three minutes to complete that paperwork before Nicole brings me the last of what she has. And with that, we are now to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna mention some ribbon cuttings coming up, but Councilman Hussein beat me to it. Looking forward to both of those, and I will tell you that at Wings Heaven, if you haven't tried the garlic Parmesan wings, you haven't eaten. They're so good. So much going on in Lansing over the last two weeks, just want to remind everybody, in the last few weeks, we have seen tremendous activity and really exciting things going on. In our downtown, we had Lansing Alive, which was really very cool, if you were able to stop by. This last Saturday, we had a grand opening with Summit Comics and Games, and there was some Pokemon festival of some sort going on, so there were a ton of Pokemon players downtown that I didn't understand, but there were a lot of people downtown. There was also a scavenger hunt. Damn Jam happened up in Old Town, which was fantastic, right at the fish ladder. One Faith did an incredible event in the northern downtown. We had our REOlds Car Show in the parking lots over by the State Historic Center. We had Tequila Fest at the Stadium. We had a variety of pop-ups at Washington Square. Just tons of stuff going on downtown, but not to be beat. The east side had a variety of things. Tatsi is our new ghost kitchen at the Allen Neighborhood Center, which was awesome. We had a fantastic Stop the Violence March with Tabernacle of David on the east side. And then the south side, tons of great things. The new Volaris Apartments in the second ward opened up, beautiful apartments. We also had an incredible cleanup on MLK, where it is, you know, from Grand River all the way down to the south side through Miller, there were tons of bags of trash that were cleaned up and put in the middle, and MDOT picked it up, so thank you to MDOT. And thank you to the Corner Spot, which is down on the south side over by Rio, just wonderful, they recruited a bunch of people to do that. Speaking of the south side, coming August 30th is a new Cata bus route, so if you are not aware, and I have had people through almost through all of the southern ward, straight from Colonial Village through Morris Park, Sycamore Park, Fabulous Acres, Cata Route 18 is gonna go right down Mount Hope. It will start up on August 30th, and we will have our first east-west bus route, newest bus route in a long time, first east-west bus route south of 496, so whereas the south sideers used to have to go up to Michigan Avenue, now they can just get on the bus. Cata Route 18, the Capital City Crosstown, is a new route, so that's really exciting, and I appreciate that from Cata. For those who are interested in the Citizen Academy, August 6th is the close, so if you are interested in getting involved in our Citizen Academy, please pull an application, they're online or at any of our community centers or City Hall. And then finally, I did want to raise that, for those who are asking about Operation Slowdown, if you have been driving fast, you have been pulled over. We're seeing a lot of people getting pulled over on Waverly and MLK, where we've seen some excessive speeds, Pennsylvania and Cedar. Other than those who've gotten pulled over, I know the neighbors have been very happy to see police officers actively, when they can, pulling over. So everybody just know that there are officers that are pulling folks over. I don't mind telling where it's gonna be, because this isn't about pulling over and getting tickets, this is about slowing people down and making sure that our neighbors are staying safe. So those are the things that I have to share. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes items 2 through 11 on the printed agenda, as well as the ranked choice voting issue. We will first hear from Kyle Wishard, followed by Loretta Stan.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm here to speak on item 7, the Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Plan. I'll admit, there's things about it that I like. I like that it gets rid of the no-knock searches. I like that it gets rid of the secondary stops for traffic stops, but there are things about it that I don't like. I really don't think that we can implicit bias training away the damage that has been done by Mayor Shore, his administration, and the Lansing Police Department. And for Mayor Shore to hold up Grand Rapids, oh, Grand Rapids is doing this. I lived on the west side for five years, and Grand Rapids is not a shining star for racial justice and equity, and so following their lead is not necessarily something I'm interested in. And frankly, I, with the alliance, I appreciated that there was community input, but I would have liked to see perhaps community-appointed officials, because it felt sort of handpicked, and the NDAs don't really help with that. And Mayor Shore being part of that process at all, I felt really tainted the process. I don't know, I mean, I personally don't view Mayor Shore as a reliable source on race or racism. I don't think, I think it's not difficult to not have racial discrimination lawsuits. It's not difficult to not get sued. And you might think, oh, well, when you're the mayor, it's a little bit easier, maybe, but I don't know. The very fact that it is the Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Plan, it's a no for me. And on the ranked choice voting, it does not surprise me that the Attorney General and potentially the governor's office would speak out against ranked choice voting, because ranked choice voting inherently challenges the existing power structure that the Democrats and Republicans both, you know, benefit from. And so the AG's saying, oh, this is a bad idea, or, oh, let's rework the language. They don't want it to happen. And if it's like, oh, let's wait for it to happen later, let's wait for the state to do it, that's just passing the buck. And so this idea that, you know, oh, we might create more work for ourselves later, that's kind of a BS argument, in my opinion, you know, because it's kind of your job to do that work. And I appreciated Councilman Jackson's point that if this passes, y'all got two years to figure it out. Like, there's time. And so with time on our side, I really do think that we shouldn't dip our toes into ranked choice voting and get scared when the water's hot. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Michael Lynn, followed by David Odom.
I thought I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you are. Then Michael Lynn and David Odom.
Okay, briefly, tonight, on the ranked choice voting, I would say it's not passing the buck, and it's not BS, it's doing your due diligence and being logical and decisive, and I support the move to table and to recall the vote on those two proposals. On the Montgomery drain issue, I was very pleased to hear that it's not going to cost the city money, and that it looks like the due diligence has been done to make sure that that's actually the case. I still would like to hear a number, though. I would still like to know, are we talking 10 million, 30 million, 20 million, 5 million, 2 million? Somebody give me a number, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Lynn, and then David Odom.
Yeah, I'm speaking on the Racial Justice Alliance again. Why do we keep just forgetting that this MITAC came up with this report? Why is it not being spoken upon? Why is this council, who all knows the issues that we've been coming up here speaking on for years, myself for years and years, with some of you all, about these issues in the fire department, where Dr. Elam sat down and expressed his real concern for that? Why is it that we just, so, I read you all the resolution that the MITAC reported, the MITAC that he sat on a council, came up with, the resolution that they stated, that he's a lot of the issues that they're having, his office is, why would you take recommendations for anybody he put in place under a non-disclosure? This is for you all. Why would you give $300,000 to the person who is the issue and all the people he put together to try to figure out this problem? This is a council issue, you guys can stop this right now and do something actual about this stuff. You all know the issues. Mike Lynn, Lansing Fire Department, firefighter, was with the department six years before they fired me for something, now I'm going through, you know, arbitration to get my job back when I shouldn't have been fired in the first place. You know these are issues. You're gonna hear from Dave Odom up next about the same issue. Do we need $300,000 to find out how you hold people like that accountable for these problems? That's it. There's your problem right there. If he holds everybody else accountable, that do the things that we come tell you about, you don't need to spend $300,000 to do that. He's spending hundreds of thousand dollars now fighting nine discrimination lawsuits. Where's the accountability, the real accountability? Not more training, not more sitting down asking people what the problems are. You know that that whole alliance never asked us one time any issues, and we slipped into a meeting on accident one time. They didn't know, because as Paul Elam said, they contracted that part out. So they didn't know Mike Lynn, Dave Odom, and the guys that were gonna come in there were all people who actually had problems. Guess how many meetings we got to come to? The one. Guess how long that lasted? About 20 minutes, till we started telling them the real issues. They didn't want us in there no more. My guess is the way that you pander to black folks, that you might really care. So when black people are talking, listen, stop with this. Like, literally, stop fighting with me. I'm just a firefighter, man. I'm just a firefighter, that's all. I'm a community activist, I'm a community advocate. I own a nonprofit. I try to help the kids and not hurt them. Stop fighting. What is the issues here? Why can't you guys figure out a way to stop this assault on black and brown people? In the news as of late, Battalion Chief de Press came forward and talked about her 23 years of discrimination. I haven't heard anything from this council, the mayor, or anything else to address any of that. the mayor, or anything else to address any of that. This is real. This lady's being beat up on social media about her coming forward. Not one ounce of understanding or thought process going to her. And guess what? It'll be really funny to you all. She's named this on my lawsuits, as a person who was discriminatory to me. And then she explained why. All falls back on that man. She was doing her job.
Thank you. Next, we have David Odom, followed by James Lancaster.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes. Obviously, I came to you guys a few council meetings ago. I gave you dates and times of how I showed up to HR and didn't get any resolve. I had a meeting with Nick Tate and Elizabeth O'Leary end of April. On April 30th, Nick Tate emailed me and said that he remembered what we discussed. And he asked me in that meeting, we talked about change. And his question to me was, out of all the questions she could have asked me, was, what do you think the union is going to do if we make change? I told him I felt discriminated against, I felt marginalized, and I felt I was in a hostile work environment. And he asked me, what do I think the union going to do if we bring change? I've been in your office. You told me yourself that you knew that there was racism on the fire department. This was years ago, and we still dealing with the same thing now. So my question is, in this email, I had emailed Elizabeth and asked her for a copy of the minutes from the meeting that we had. She sent me four pages, and when you read the four pages, it's everything that I said. But she didn't put anything in there that he said in that meeting. She didn't put in there that he asked me about what I thought the union would do. He also said some other stuff, which I emailed them back and let them know. He asked, in the email, he said, I don't think it's appropriate to ask Elizabeth to change her notes. Her notes are her recollection of the events that transpired. So you can give me four pages of notes of things that I said. But how was it? It was three of us in the meeting. I wasn't the only one talking. Not one word of anything he said. Before I went in, he said, take everything out your pockets, put it over here in another room, took everything out, put it over there. $300,000 for a committee that's going to make some changes. How much would it cost me to get him to respond back to my email? Because you know what he said at the end of his email? He said, I look forward to meeting with you next week and making progress on some of your concerns expressed in our meeting on April. That was April the 30th. Today is July 26. I ain't heard from him. That's the mayor, and then the deputy mayor. I ain't heard from him. He said, they haven't checked on me to say, hey, David, are things better? How you feeling? You told us you felt marginalized, you felt discriminated against, you feel you were in a hostile work environment. Say I was lying about the whole thing. Say none of it was true. Those are some serious allegations and concerns to make. But they haven't got back with me since April the 30th, to ask me, David, are you still going through the same thing? Is everything okay? How can we help? I didn't ask him to email me and tell me that he was going to meet with me the following week. That came out of his own mouth. It's email that he sent me. I'm still waiting. It's July 26. Was I supposed to email him back and say, hey, Nick, remember you said you was going to meet with me? I mean, I the one made the concerns. If they really cared the way I feel, they would have reached back out to me and said, hey, David, how are things going? If things getting better? Maybe they are, maybe they're not, but they don't even know.
Thank you. Next, we have James Lancaster, and then Max Dunbar.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you once again. There were a few comments that were made during the Committee of the Whole that were kind of concerning to me that I wanted to address with you briefly. First, there was this concern that somehow if this resolution were to go through and be on the ballot, get approved, that there would be invalid elections, or some sort of consequences like that. I can just tell you that under the resolution that you all approved, that just can't happen, unless you let it happen, because there are steps that have to occur before this ranked choice voting will be implemented. And in fact, what I would urge you to do is not reconsider the action of approving this, is give this some time to let Ms. Byram come here, and I'd ask you to give me an opportunity to address some of these issues, because I just this weekend got Mr. Braider's letter. I've gone through it. I can just tell you that there's nothing in there that is insurmountable problem here. In fact, most of them are frankly very trivial things, and most of them were addressed in the East Point situation. So that's the first thing I'd urge you to. But I also, quite frankly, I'm a little frustrated with this, because, you know, what's going on here is the Elections Bureau just doesn't want to deal with this. And I have a little experience with this. As some of you know, I was the attorney for voters, not politicians. And one of the first things I did with them was set up their campaign finance reporting system. And as some of you may know, is that the state of Michigan has approved certain vendors for campaign finance reporting, because if any of you use the merch system that the state gives you for free, it's a total pain in the butt, okay? Well, there's a particular vendor that I've used in the past for campaigns I've worked on. The state has approved that for candidate committees, for political action committees, for political party committees, but not for ballot question committees. So I asked them to approve it for that. And mind you, the reporting is all the same, and the state told me no. You know why? We just don't want to have to deal with it. It's too much work. That's what I got told. And mind you, the only difference in reporting for ballot question committees is the fact that ballot question committees can take corporate dollars, and there's no campaign contribution limits. So the reporting is all the same. That's what's going on here. The state just doesn't want to deal with this. What I'm asking you to do is to consider this carefully, because I can tell you, if you would allow me an opportunity to speak, sit down at the table, and address point-by-point Mr. Braider's assertions, I can almost guarantee you that I will be able to convince you that it is not illegal, because frankly, it is not. I've been, as some of you know me, I've been in this election law game for a long time. I have a lot of experience in this. This is what's going on. You have an innovative approach to voting that you have given, on the cusp of giving your voters at least the opportunity to say yay or nay to. I'd urge you to do that, and don't take any action tonight that stops this process, because as a practical matter, to get it on the ballot, the governor's going to have to sign off of it by the 10th. So I would just ask that you not take any action that revokes this, reconsiders it, but just lets the process keep going, and give me an opportunity to speak at your meeting on the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. Lancaster.
Next, I have Max Dunbar and David Lambert.
Hello again. Might come as a shock to you, but I'm here to talk about ranked choice voting. Have you heard of it? This is related, I promise, but I'd like to start with a bit of personal history. The first time I ever came to the city of Lansing was over a decade ago. It was for the first political rally I ever attended. See, there was a state legislator who had used the word vasectomy on the floor of the House, and she got censured and booted off the floor just for speaking out her position on a bill. It was gross. It was obvious sexism, and I was one of thousands of people in the crowd to protest that. I was proud to be. That legislator is, as you all know, now our county clerk, Barb Byram. When I moved to Lansing, because I fell in love with that city during that protest, and when I moved here, I chose the apartment complex, I did, so that I could be in the 67th District, so that in Barb Byram's last year of her last term, I could be represented by her. I really admire her and the work she does. I treat her as an incredibly credible source. So when I say that everything in the letter that she submitted shouldn't be taken seriously, please understand that that is coming from a place that takes Barb Byram very seriously. She's an incredible professional and should be listened to and believed. But in this case, she said that it's not compatible with Michigan law without providing any specific instances of where it would be. She's talked about the case of the East Point voting, which I mentioned in the Committee of the Whole, should not be taken seriously by anyone arguing in good faith. Look, I love Barb. I'll vote for it again. I'll do it. But she's wrong on this issue. As simple as that. No hostility, no judgment, except to say that on this, she's incorrect. Look, I get the hesitance, right? No one in Michigan has ever done this before, not in a lasting way. No one wants to be the first city to mess this up. But I have never known Lansing leadership to be afraid to take the lead before. There are three people in this room right now who want to be mayor. Others among you are on the ballot. It's time for you to show us the kind of leader you plan to be. Are you going to make the tough decision? Are you going to be the brave and the bold one who looks the obvious false scare tactics in the eye and says, no, I'm not going to stand for this. I'm going to do what the people here in Lansing actually want me to? Or are you going to bow to the obvious in what, for the record, would be the first act of actual transparency this city's engaged in in years? You guys got a choice. I think most of you have already made your decisions. But until the vote is cast, it's not too late to change your mind. Let the people of Lansing vote on this. Don't pull it back. Be the leader you promised yourself you would be when you were my age. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have David Lambert.
David Lambert, 1023 South Holm Street, First Ward. So I came here to speak first about the grant acceptances, the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund grant, and also the Bloomberg Fine Atlantic Freeze Global Mailers Challenge Grant. I compliment the administration on applying for these grants. I think that's the kind of thing our city should do. It should be going out and representing what it does and looking for innovative ways to solve problems, new approaches to things. And as some of the other people at this meeting have started mentioning as well, we have an opportunity to explore changes in our ways of voting for you yourselves as well. I would also encourage you to facilitate that process. I think we should be open to different ways of doing government, different ways of tackling the problems in front of us, and not be afraid to try different things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our final speaker, so we are now to counsel consideration of legislative matters.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So on July 12th, this body affirmed two resolutions, to essentially put before the electorate the opportunity to amend our charter. One resolution pertained to the insertion of, or the implementation of ranked choice voting, and the other was the elimination of primary elections. And this would obviously be for city offices only. That said, we have received information since that time from our county clerk, Barb Byram, as well as the Director of Elections that call into question the legality of ranked choice voting in the state of Michigan, as well as feasibility for the city of Lansing in terms of implementation. Some things referenced were, as an example, the cost of equipment, and whether or not that equipment would result in certifiable elections. List goes on. That being said, the county clerk has stated that she would be available to meet with this body on August 9th, which would be our next city council meeting. And so the resolution today will be to essentially reconsider, which per our council rules, we have until the end of the next council meeting, which would be this council meeting, to do that, any prior vote. And then the second piece, I believe, is we'll be moving to re-refer to Committee of the Whole. So with that being said, I would move to reconsider the vote whereby Resolution 2021-149 was passed at the last council meeting on July 12th.
That is a proper motion. Is there discussion? Saying no, no, oh, I'm sorry. I honestly did not see your end.
I'm sorry. I just have a question. So we, this has to go to the governor by the 10th. She has to certify it by the 10th. Is that correct? I'm trying to figure out the timeline.
I was told that we have to send it by the 10th.
We have to send it by the 10th, so we can still have a discussion on the 9th?
Yes.
And then be prepared to...
And as I said, we would have done it tonight, but the clerk was not available. But we have to pass the reconsideration movement tonight, or we can't do it.
Okay. I would just ask that we have both sides then, and Committee of the Whole have a discussion. I think we should have the ranked choice voting people there as well to provide their side as well as Barb Byram, and so then we can make an informed decision.
I will say, we're not going to have a debate. We will have two differing...
No, no.
Okay.
And so that we can make an informed decision. I'm not talking about a debate, but, you know. So that's the only thing I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar, then what?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for that.
I, I'm wondering on the procedure for reconsideration, because I know that if you have someone absent during the original vote, you get two, you get two weeks to reconsider.
If the person's absent, they can do it when they're next here.
I can move to reconsider.
When they're next here. She's here tonight.
But I'm here, and I can.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is that at the next council meeting, so we're not meeting next week, so the second council meeting after the vote would be the 9th. So we, you could move to reconsider on the 9th.
We could. There's a motion in front of us. What's the...
The provision of the rules, I believe that you're referring to, Councilmember Dunbar, is if a item that requires two-thirds is defeated, then the council has two meetings to reconsider it. It's Rule 14, and it's specific to defeated motions that require more than, votes of more than five moments.
Okay.
That's the two-meeting time. Other than that, the rule specifies the next.
Rule 33 is very specific.
Oh, my God.
You're muted.
Rule 33 is very specific. It has to be done at the meeting that the motion was passed or the immediate meeting thereafter, and it can't be reconsidered more than once. And it's five votes.
Councilmember Wood?
Were you done, Councilmember?
Yeah, Councilmember Dunbar, you're done. Thank you very much. Councilmember Wood?
I would also ask, I appreciate the fact that we would be having someone from ranked choice voting speak, but I also want to make sure that the city attorney is prepared and ready to talk to us about our legal responsibility as part of this. You know, I appreciate there, we can pull 50 attorneys out there, and no offense to the attorneys on the dialysis that have different opinions on how they read the law, but we are governed under the city attorney as our legal representative. So I would want to make sure that he or whoever he is charged in his office to handle this is prepared to answer those questions. Thank you.
Mr. President, just so I'm clear, is it on the legality of ranked choice voting, or is it on the potential for harm if the decision is wrong?
Correct.
The latter.
Both. The latter.
Oh, both. Oh, both.
Both, okay.
Both of the latter.
I think both.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a pretty light agenda. The only thing is our quarterly update on lawsuits. So we'll keep it light if we can.
Thank you.
All right. Motion before us is to reconsider item 2021-149. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move that we re-refer Resolution 2021-149 to Committee of the Whole.
That is a proper motion. It is not debatable. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Vice President.
Would move to reconsider the vote by whereby, sorry, Resolution 2021-150 was passed at the last council meeting on July 12th.
That is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Saying no, no, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Vice President.
I would move to re-refer Resolution 2021-150 to Committee of the Whole.
That is a proper motion, which is not debatable. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda. Items two and three on the consent agenda were already taken up, so items four through six.
Anyone wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda? Mr. Jackson, Councilmember Jackson.
Not necessarily, but I realize I have a family non-life-threatening emergency that I have to excuse for.
Absolutely. Sorry. Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We'll excuse you in a minute. Anything from consent to be pulled? Mr. Vice President?
Sorry.
I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, I would move the consent agenda. As always, I'm going to read these to the record very quickly. We have a city council meeting schedule amendment to remove the August 30th, 2021 meeting. We have a workers' compensation settlement, and we have the tri-county office on aging fiscal year 2022 annual implementation plan. That makes it on the agenda.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. We have the Racial Justice and Equity Plan.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So looking at my notes real quick, as part of the 2021, 2022 budget resolution, council moved $300,000 from the HRCS budget to a contingency account for a racial justice and equity plan. In order to make expenditures... In order to make expenditures from this account, contingency account, sorry, requires that council actually approve the plan, being supported by the administration. We've had a couple of meetings now with the plan, as devised by the MRJA, have been discussed. This... The resolution that is before you tonight does approve the racial justice and equity plan and then allows for the administration to make the expenditures as outlined in that plan. So with that being said, I will move the resolution.
That is a proper motion. Is there further discussion beyond that that we had in the Committee of the Whole? Councilmember Fitzley?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. And we did have discussion earlier in Cal about other cities...
Councilmember Fitzley? I'm sorry. I did it again. Did you want to say...
Oh, I'm sorry. You do you.
Okay. Very good. Go ahead. I apologize if you're on the other end, Councilmember.
That's okay. I will not be supporting this resolution. And we had discussions earlier in Cal about other cities that have implemented robust racial justice plans. San Antonio's was mentioned, also Washington DC and Grand Rapids, and I'll also add Kansas City, Missouri, that has a very, very robust racial equity plan. The difference between all of those programs, I would gather, is that they were done in the public form, and this one was not. City of Lansing's discussions regarding diversity plan was done behind closed doors with participants required to sign an NDA, and policies and procedures that affect city employees and city residents have to be done in the light of day so that folks trust the process, and this wasn't done. And for those reasons, I can't support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Fitzley? Councilmember Dunbar, you're next. Floris, you're next.
Thank you. I also will not be supporting this resolution, although I do believe that work does need to be done. An incredible amount of work does need to be done. My concern, in addition to transparency issues, is also that we had work done. There was a report that was generated by a committee that was put together in 2019 that had a number of tactics and recommendations put forward to the mayor and dealt with many of the things that were still on. And one of the things that was said earlier was that we have a sense of immediacy, that we need to get this funded so that we can implement these changes immediately. But these recommendations in the first report were made in November of 2019, and there was no sense of immediacy then. And that committee didn't cost us a dime. Those were citizens that were appointed to a committee. And part of the results of that committee were lists of things that were related to accountability, repercussions for violating policies that resulted in discrimination, ways to hold folks accountable, zero tolerance for types of discrimination that are based on gender, sexual orientation, race, culture, et cetera, complaint procedures on how to file those and how they would be processed. And those are... Like, that's not even discussed yet in this process. So this was two years ago, almost. And now we're looking at a plan, which is $300,000, and the largest component of it, the $76,000, is basically for heat maps. I mean, it's a fancy term. They say equity matrix, but when you look up what an equity matrix is for your city, it's a heat map of where the folks live by race and income and English language speaking. And we do that already. Our IT and our... We have a GIS guy at the city that I've personally worked with heat maps that we've created at the city. And so I just think there's a lot of stuff in here that is costing a lot of money that could be better spent on concrete solutions to the problems. And the other thing that I was going to mention, and I love the work of Paul Elam, I appreciate him as a professional, Dr. Elam immensely, but part of the survey that he presented earlier doesn't address accountability in any way. It talks about, you know, surveys and opinions of folks who definitely have feelings about things here in the city, but there's a lot of folks who didn't participate because of fear of repercussions and retaliation. And so the survey samples are low, and the questions didn't address accountability and how folks are feeling with regard to advancement or disciplinary procedures. And I believe that we have a lot of this data that wouldn't cost us nearly this much to dig deep into what we have already, to look at static data in hiring and firing and discipline and advancement. And we have the ability to do this, I think, for a lot less. So that's why I won't be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. I will be supporting this. I do think while there are multiple places we could start, this is a starting point, and it's a concrete plan. It's going to develop capacity so that we can do more of this work in the city. We have to start somewhere, and this is what's been presented to us as a spending priority. And I would encourage the council to follow suit and support this resolution. And with that, I would ask for those in favor to please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay. We have the intergovernmental agreement for the Montgomery drain.
We just... Councilmember Hussein?
Sure. So as I understand, this essentially expands the drain project to include public improvements that will be made on the Red Seer development property. And it really makes these public improvements more cost-efficient, if you will, because you move it there once, the players move it there are the same. As I understand, the drain district doesn't work, essentially builds the city, and then we assess the development to assuage councilwoman Fitzley's concerns. There are protections the city baked in, and we will not... So with that being said, I move the resolution.
That is a proper motion. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, except to very happy Councilmember Fitzley, I would call for those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember... Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. The next resolution that we have before us is a grant acceptance for Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. This is actually an extension to a grant that we currently have. This is an additional $20,000. $5,000 of it will go for goods and services. $15,000 of it will go for personnel. This is to integrate the free finance counseling from the Financial Empowerment Center within the process of distributing rent assistance. And with that, there is no grant match because our grant match was done in the first part of this grant that we received. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Jim to help me out here. That is a proper motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. This next grant was applied by the chief strategy officer. This is the 2021 Global Mayor's Challenge. There were 631 applications. 99 of them are now in this process as part of the grant application. What it is, is the ability to have up to $50,000 that would be used to fine-tune the grant that's due in October. This would be helping with early childhood reading. This would be... The expectation would be if this was received, it would be received in early 2022. There are 15 grant prize winners, and this could be up to a million-dollar grant. This would be working with the school district and others to help make sure that third graders are being... Are proficient in their reading and that they are able to excel after the pandemic and meet the qualifications as far as a part of the testing process, enabling them to move forward. As a disclosure, the chief stewardess, the officer, Julie Taylor, did say that she might be reaching out to Councilmember Hussein as a teacher and asking for some input with that. And she did mention because the program that I oversee as the executive director foster grandparents and talking about the possibility of having seniors help with this plan. But again, this is the planning process. This is not the implementation, so I want the council made aware of that. So this is, again, one time, and I would move the acceptance of this grant. Answer any questions?
We have some questions from Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I think this is the first time I've seen, like, money given to help you apply for more money.
Yeah, I know. Isn't that nice?
So the $50,000 is to help collaborate, to get the statistics that are needed to prepare a better application in the next round? Okay. Thanks.
And there is no city match.
I don't want to preempt someone else's program, but it's also to enable an application that could end up with a million-dollar grant also or higher than that. That's Judy Keeler's work here.
Thanks, Judy.
Okay. There is a proper motion before us. I do not see any further discussion from the council. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So the next resolution deals with a collective bargaining agreement, ratification of Teamsters supervisory and non-supervisory units, period covering January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Just a few high points. This does eliminate the provision regarding absences due to adverse conditions to align with our other CBAs that are in place. Does include a 2% wage increase. The wage increase will not be paid retroactively, but there is a $1,000 signing bonus with respect to members of 214, so that may set up the resolution.
Proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I... This is a one-year contract similar to the one-year contract that we just passed a couple of weeks ago for Teamsters 243. They received a 2% retroactive pay increase because at the time of their negotiation, the inference to the bargaining group was there was not money available for a raise. And so they agreed to settle the contract without that. After that, the... It was determined that there was enough money. We ended up having additional money that we were able to put into the general fund or to rainy day fund during the budget process. I talked about it as well as some other council members, make sure that we would go back and make 243 whole. I was somewhat concerned over the fact that 214 is receiving a $1,000 signing bonus for a year contract when we just approved one for Teamsters 243 a couple of weeks ago. So I have indicated, and I'm indicating to the mayor now, I know there's still a few other issues out there on the table, but in order to have parity, I encourage you to look at the $1,000 signing bonus. Now, I realize that 214 is not getting a retroactive, but they had gotten wage increases. So Teamsters didn't. Teamsters 214 didn't at that time. So I would encourage you to think about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Now, I can go back and look. It's my understanding that they... There was no step increase. There was no wage increase for 214. It was the same offer made to both at the time, was to settle at a 0% going into... In December, 243 opted to take that and see what would happen going forward. 214 indicated they wanted to see what happened with the federal money. So we can only do retroactive with someone who's got a contract. If you have an expired contract, you can't do retroactive. The $1,000, in essence, is showing that we understand a lot of the work that they did, but because you can't go retroactive, that's where the $1,000 can be... I'm happy to talk about it offline, but that's kind of the conversation.
Councilmember Wood?
There was some inferences made in closed session that led us to believe that there was some negotiating room. So I will leave it at that and hope that you'll talk to Nick Tate about what he said in my comments.
And with that, we're nearing close to disclosure, and I'm going to push us away from that. So, all right. Very good. Any further comments that are not part of disclosure? All right. Very good. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay. We are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow form in the back. We'll give you about another three minutes to complete that if you haven't. Turn it into Nicole in the back. In the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and committees.
Mr. Vice President. Motion, please.
Sure. I would move that all items be considered as being ready to pull and referrals be made by you.
That's a proper motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay. We have items from the city clerk, minutes of boards of committee.
Place on file.
Items from the mayor setting a public hearing and acting on approval for Lansing Chartering here.
Committee of the Whole.
Setting a show cause hearing and make orders or make safer demolish to 125 East Mount Oak Avenue.
Committee of the Whole.
Introduction of an ordinance and the ordinance for the Porter Apartments for payment in lieu of taxes.
Public safety. No, I'm sorry. Yeah. Development plan. Yeah. Development plan.
Okay. And then we have the introduction and the adoption of the ordinance for payment in lieu of taxes for apartments west 519 West Collins.
Development plan.
And we have the introduction and adoption of an ordinance for payments in lieu of taxes for Walter French at 1900 South Pennsylvania.
Development plan.
And we have an introduction and adoption of an ordinance for payment in lieu of taxes for Cedar Place at 201 West Jolly Road.
Development plan.
We have the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 emergency carry forwards.
Committee on Ways and Means.
And collective bargaining agreement that was already read by earlier tonight.
Was set up.
Communications and petitions. We have Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting Notice.
Place on file.
Notice from the Liquor Control Commission about menu $95 C request for a transfer of a liquor license at 6065 South Washington.
Committee on City Operations.
And another notice from the Liquor Control Commission, the green door, blue green door, blue bar and grill for transfer membership interests in the business.
Committee on City Operations.
And a communication from Dot Johnson about mowing parks and parks in Brooklyn Boulevard.
Place on file.
We are to motion to excuse absence.
Councilmember Bass?
Move to excuse Brian for his absence.
Proper motion made. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
We have your remarks by councilmembers.
Closing remarks. Councilmember?
I just want to wish you a happy birthday as well. You know, I've been thinking about your pending retirement for some time, and we're gonna... I think that a lot of us agree that you ask a lot of really, really good questions on this, and honestly, it informs all of us so much more, and I think that we're going to have to figure out how to pick up the slack when you're gone. So I appreciate you and happy birthday, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your day.
I do want to point out that she's not leaving for two more years.
Adam brought it up, so...
She's not allowed to leave while I'm holding this gavel. All right. Seeing no further comments from the city council?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yeah. I neglected before to mention two things. One, today is the 31st anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, so it's worth recognizing that. Great achievement. My understanding that our president was a sponsor or co-sponsor of the act, so that's great to hear. Second, this came up in Cal, so I will... I looked it up, and I will address it for Councilwoman Dunbar. You had mentioned the racial breakdown, information that you requested that was emailed out to all of council by Mark on May 7th at 4:55 PM. You want to check your email. Every member... It was emailed to... Every member, it was emailed to Councilwoman you, you and Councilwoman Hussein and Councilwoman Spatafor, and then everybody else was CC'd. So you should have that information. If you don't, Mark can resend it to you. But we did look it up, and four fifty-five PM on May seventh, it was sent to you. So you should have that in your city email.
Okay. Are you talking about the racial breakdown of the employees?
For the fire department. You asked for the racial, the complaints, racial breakdown of the complaints over, I forget how long you had asked that. You mentioned committee of the hall, that you didn't have it. That was sent May seventh. We went.
Okay.
So we can send it to you again if you'd like. Just ask Mark. But you guys should have had that for the last few months.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government related matters. We, speakers will have up to three minutes. We have Michael Lynn, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Disgusting what you guys just did, but it's all good. The privilege coming off of you, Spatafor, is just ridiculous sometimes. I mean, the two people who voted against it, you just were spittingly angry. I won't say what I said last time to get in trouble again, but I'm not understanding that. You know, you have somebody who's an actual victim of this discrimination. You all are trying to fix, and I'm telling you, this ain't the way. And somebody that stands up for us and speaks on it, who happened to know a lot of the information of what's going on, I don't understand where the privilege comes from, that y'all know more than we do on what needs to happen. I just don't understand that. It's sad. But it's like what we always see from this, from this, from this, you know, from this people. Like, I just don't understand why you won't listen to the people. You know, if it's marginalized folks, and you speaking on ADA is just like, why? That's just so sad. It's just disgusting what's going on up here. But anyway, I know you all chalk it up to, say again? I know you guys all chalk this up to, like, political campaigns when Kathy and Spitzley speak on this stuff, but I don't understand why you don't chalk the very fact that this alliance is in place right now to political. It just doesn't make any sense. You guys pick and choose when you're going to use that terminology or that thought process not to listen to folks. Everything that we've seen out of this mayor over the last year has been all political. Everything we're seeing out of Spatafor now, as far as gun violence, is all political. We know this. You don't care about our, our kids. You don't care that your police officers are pulling kids over and throwing charges on them left and right. You just bragged about it. For all you guys complaining about noise on the streets, be happy, we're pulling them over. You, I mean, just your perspective on this whole situation is just ridiculous. And this is supposed to be like a, a progressive city. I just don't understand how you don't get that. Like, who is advising y'all that you coming up here and telling us that how you guys are pulling people over left and right? Kathy is like actively trying to investigate now why we have all these young people getting pulled over and snatched out of their vehicles every day. And you're, 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 you're like up here bragging on the fact that you, you've implemented this. So we're doing this, you guys. Pay attention. I just don't understand it. Where, where's the disconnect at with the people up here? I mean, Moore's River Drive is not that far from everywhere we're at. I understand, nobody likes to speed. Nobody likes any of that type of situation, but you guys got to play within the law, man. Play within the rules. You're not playing within the rules. There's tons of people out here that know you ain't playing within the rules. So I'd like for, for somebody up on this council to try to find out why it is they keep pulling our kids over, and you keep talking about these secondary stops. And you, you know, you're touting that as something that you're not doing anymore, but then you brought in Michigan State Police to do it. And they're chasing kids all over our city, a hundred miles an hour, any road they can find them on, until they stop, whether it's into a tree, a house, a kid, or wherever the case is. So you've just circumvented the old policy you put in to try to act like you care about what's going on in our city. I just don't understand it. I have conversations with you offside of this, and everybody on here seems to feel like they, they care about these issues, but then you get up here. Just don't understand it, man.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Kyle Rashard.
Okay, just briefly, now that we're back to in-person meetings, which although it wasn't publicly announced, here we are. And we're not doing a hybrid Zoom situation, even though East Lansing seems to be able to do a call-in feature in spite of whatever it is that's restricting the city here from being able to do that. I would like to make the following suggestion. When you start cows at five o'clock, you have virtually disenfranchised anyone that works an eight to five Monday through Friday job, because it's virtually impossible to get out of work at five o'clock, drive downtown, park, go through security, and get up here and be here within the first five minutes of the meeting, which is typically when you have your public comment. So if you're going to consistently start at five, or even occasionally start at five, on those days, I suggest you move public comment back to five thirty. Now, I understand that may mean doing a little flip-flopping with the agenda. It may mean holding a vote after you've already discussed the topic until people can have their comment time. But you're disenfranchising a whole class of people already just by going back to public com, or public meetings without a Zoom hybrid, without a call-in option. Don't go another step farther, please. Let them have a chance to talk. Move your comment time back down in the agenda to give people that physical ability to get down here. Thank you.
Thank you, and our final speaker tonight is Kyle Rashard.
Hi there. Thank you to Mayor Shore for sharing with us that today's the thirty-first anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Two weeks ago, I stood before this body, and I asked, why did y'all come back without a hybrid model? And it doesn't really seem like there's an effort to move in that direction. And I can't, like, okay, two, two, two weeks ago, I wasn't alone. Two weeks ago, I had a comrade with me, Kelsey Hudson, who spoke up about the same issue. And she's not here tonight because she doesn't have the spoons. The energy's just not there. But she would have spoken had she had the opportunity, had there been a hybrid option, had there been a call-in option. But she can't. And so when you take this away, and I also, I have people in some chats that I'm in concerned about that the email comment has also been taken away, which is a concern. All right, maybe not. It's just hard to find. The new website is a dumpster fire. The people with disabilities need to be able to come to this meeting and voice their opinion. Working class people need to be able to come to these meetings and voice their opinion. And that can't always happen in person. And frankly, it's, it's hard when, you know, President Spatafor, your, your announcement was through Twitter, and you said, you know, it's time to get back, back to normal. And so it, it's, there's a part of it that feels like you want to live in the nineteen hundreds. There's a part of it that feels like you want to toe the party line more than you care about the people of this city. And so I'd, I'd ask again that we make some effort to do a hybrid model, do a call-in feature, something, so that people with disabilities and working class people can have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. At nine oh two, the Lansing City Council is adjourned.